Possible annexation of Little Gables Neighborhood Association. And we are meeting here at the Adult Activity Center in Coral Gables because of the capacity and the interest shown in the subject. And welcome to all of the neighbors, Coral Gables and Little Gables and others. And I would like to call on our city manager, Kathy Swanson-Rivenberg, to start the agenda and start with the presentations, please.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may, I'd like to read in the title. This is, today we're going to be having a public hearing on item A1, which is a resolution of the City Commission of Coral Gables approving the submission of an application to Miami-Dade County for the annexation of the area known as Little Gables into the city of Coral Gables pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Miami-Dade County Code and requesting Miami-Dade County approve the application. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And to be very clear and emphasize what our city attorney has said, this is, the result of this, if favorable, will be for us to submit to Miami-Dade County a proposal for the annexation of Little Gables into the city of Coral Gables. This is not a final vote by any means, and there's still a long way to go, but this is the beginning. Madam City Manager?
Yes, Ms. ...
Let's be close.
Thank you. Yes. First of all, I want you to know that Commissioner ... Commissioner Keon is in the elevator coming down, so she'll be here in moments. And Commissioner Lago is en route, so they send their regrets that they'll, a little late, but they'll be there as soon as possible. Tonight's meeting, it's an opportunity for you to review the feasibility study. This is the same feasibility study that we presented to you at the last meeting. The only change, we, as you know, we've added three police officers for this district. We added neighborhood safety aides for this district, and we added code enforcement officers for this district. The only change in the overall feasibility was the removal of some police officers that were identified for private schools. Doesn't affect Little Gables, but it does affect the overall feasibility study. Everything else is exactly the same. We also have the PowerPoint, and we would say that anyone that wanted to review it that wasn't able to come, they could have their friends look at it at coralgables.com, what's called a backslash annexation, or just look in the search box under annexation under coralgables.com. All of the reports, as well as the PowerPoint, are there for people to review later. We will first have our consultants present the PowerPoint to review that. We're hoping that questions can be saved for after the presentation, and we have several members from staff that are here. Our Assistant City Manager, Director of Public Safety, Frank Fernandez, our Assistant City Manager for Operations and Infrastructure, Peter Iglesias, our Finance Director, our Assistant Finance Director for Management and Budget, Public Works, Parking, many of the departments that, if there are questions, they will be there. And many people have been communicating with our office through Naomi Levy-Garcia. She is here, and we will all be here afterwards if there's additional questions and comments. Our attorneys, our, the city attorney has hired Craig Coller, who is outside counsel for this, as well as Henry Eiler, who is outside planning consultant. And the reason why they were hired, every annexation that has happened in Miami-Dade County has gone through these two gentlemen when they were Miami-Dade County employees. Recalling the city's Coral Gables' successful history with annexation, Kings Bay, Snapper Creek, Hammock Oaks, Hammock Lakes, several, Deering Bay, several of the areas that had been annexed before actually came through that Miami-Dade process. And so with it, Mr. Mayor, if I may, we can go forward with the PowerPoint presentation. Staff, as well as consultants, are here to answer any questions that commission will have, as well as questions from the public.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Introduce yourself for the good people here.
My name is Henry Eiler. I'm the President Principal of Eiler Planning, and we've been retained, as the manager mentioned, to, to, to help the city with this annexation, as well as a concurrent annexation process in High Pines and Ponce Davis, which is not the purpose of today's meeting. In fact, the, the purpose of the meeting today, and I do realize a number of you may have seen this presentation, so we're not going to dwell on any one slide for any length of time, because it is similar to the one that was presented on July 25th at the youth center. But the purpose of this meeting is to provide an overview of Coral Gables services, present the financial and service outcomes of annexation, what to expect on services, as well as finances, outline the annexation process, next steps, listen to public comment, of course, any public comment anyone might have after this presentation, and to discuss and consider an annexation resolution to Miami-Dade County that the city attorney mentioned previously and read the caption to. And note at the bottom, as I've mentioned, the High Pines-Ponce Davis is being treated as a separate discussion and application, not the subject tonight. Future meeting possibly in the next month or two, but this is strictly for the Little Gables area.
I would like to note that the, this application is not tied to the one with High Pines. So this will be separately, assuming it's, if it's passed by the commission and the county commission and goes to the voters, it would only be this area. That may also be voted on, it could be the same time or a later time, but they're not interconnected.
Moving ahead, just a little comparison of Coral Gables to Little Gables. The city itself is about 13 square miles. Gables is about 205 acres. The city has 47 miles of waterway, over 50 public parks and green spaces, population around 51,000 for the city of Coral Gables. Household income in Coral Gables averages about $151,000. It's 43 percent residential land use approximately, and of course, the downtown is a very, very attractive part of the city, and it currently is undergoing some, some great renovation. Little Gables has a population around 2,500. Registered voters, we know specifically, is 1,624 as of June of this year. About half the homes are owner-occupied, and the income level is around $60,000, $61. And it's mainly low-density residential single-family, about 70 percent. About nine miles of paved roads, and it's surrounded on three sides by Coral Gables, and on the north side across Tamiami Trail by the city of Miami. Who we can be together, why is this annexation, why is this a good idea? Squaring off makes good, efficient sense from an operational and a land use standpoint. This will square off the boundaries in this area for the city of Coral Gables, and will allow our, our communities to, will allow our communities to unify, to improve, to increase government services to the residents, to direct infrastructure dollars to the most needed areas, and to strengthen public safety and emergency management capabilities. Now, Coral Gables is big enough to have resources, but small enough to be responsive. They have uncompromised levels of service. You'll see later on in this presentation, very impressive levels of service that really are not matched in Miami-Dade County and in very many places, if, if at all. Rapid police and fire response, frequent and convenient waste services, new and upgraded parks, you'll notice that in a lot of the areas that have been annexed by the city over the years, the parks and the landscaping, much better. Improved roads and drainage. They have a city ombudsman available to help residents and businesses. They also have a mobile permit service, which is very convenient for those that really can't travel very well, but still want to try to get a permit of some kind. And the, and the ombudsman is there to help people that really are, you know, government can be very confusing, where do I go for this and that? That's what that person does. They also have an e-newsletter and quarterly magazine and a number of other features. Now, now the city is definitely planning to hire additional personnel and commit significant resources to Little Gables, so that the levels of service in the rest of the city and in Little, and Little Gables will be the same, as much as possible. If the annexation is approved, the city plans to add the following personnel and equipment: three police officers, one neighborhood safety aide, and, and about $300,000 in vehicles and equipment on the police side. Firefighters, six firefighters over time, and about $224,000 in vehicles. Parks, about $2 million in parks improvements over a period of the first years. Code enforcement, two additional code enforcement officers. Solid waste, five fully-vetted employees, and the city is very careful with the vetting of its employees, because they'll be coming on your property or next to your property, so that's a very important thing. Roadways, about 130,000 per year in average, and re-milling of roads and installing sidewalks and crosswalks where they're needed. And then landscaping, which will be a big effect over the first years, $200,000 a year in trimming, replacement, and maintenance. The Coral Gables police services are outstanding. They are accredited by CIA, which is the nationally-recognized accreditation agency for police services. They have zone coverage, which, which the city staff can go into later on if there are questions. They have, they have neighborhood team leaders and neighborhood safety aides. All of these contribute to a much more safe and a good environment. They have high-tech and high-touch types of programs. The emergency response here for, for city police would be about five minutes. And non-emergency response is about eight minutes, and I can assure you, based on the data that I've seen, that Miami-Dade County is quite a bit higher in, in both of those categories. The police staffing and equipment, they have 192 sworn officers. They have a ratio of 3.85 officers per, per, per thousand persons, which is in comparison to Miami-Dade County, which has 2.2 per thousand persons. They have an aggressive recruitment plan to attract high-quality candidates, and has increased the number of applications received from 384 in 2016 to almost, to about 1,200 in 2017. They only have four police vacancies at this time, which is amazing for a staff of that Fire and emergency medical are very, very important to, to, to any resident, of course. The average response time here for fire and emergency medical for the Coral, for, for the Coral Gables Fire Department would be 6.6, 6 minutes and 40 seconds. The closest relocated, the, the closest station would be the proposed relocation of Fire Station Number One to Alcazar Avenue and Salzado Street. Coral Gables Fire Department is only one of 40 cities accredited by the, by the Commission on Fire Accreditation International within ISO rating, number-one rating. One of only 40 throughout the nation. Parks and Recreation, really an outstanding part of the city's services. They are also accredited by the Commission for Park and Recreation Agencies, CAPRA. You will, if, if you were in the city, then you would get discounted resident rates at the Biltmore and the Granada Golf Cores, the youth center programs, tennis centers, Venetian Pool, and this center here, that we're in. If this annexation takes place, the, the city plans to renovate the, the, the park in the area and purchase and construct a new passive park following neighborhood input. The city always constructs its park based on input from the neighborhood. What are the neighborhood needs, they want to know, and they will want to know when, if the annexation were to occur, there'll be a program for parks improvements. Landscape and infrastructure, road resurfacing, we mentioned that earlier, improved drainage, new and repaired sidewalks, new tree plantings, regular tree trimming, and a new street lighting program, very important for public safety. And I see that in a lot of cities I work in, in Miami-Dade County, something of, training for us. Residential waste services, they pick up at the back and the side of the house twice a week by fully-vetted city employees. Goat cans in front of the house, to the side, and in the back. City recycling picked up once a week, bulky waste picked up once a week. So those are waste services, and those are quite a bit more than what you might have, what you currently have in Miami-Dade County. I'm going to recognize Craig Coller to, to talk about a couple of these slides, and I'll be back for the last few minutes.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor Craig Coller, outside counsel for the city. This slide is really Craig Lee's slide, our city attorney, and the outstanding job that he's done with some very unique and innovative legislation. And Craig, do you want to say a few things about it?
I'm honored that you would say that, but this is really the commission's, a lot of this was sponsored by this commission, and, and these issues have come up and they've continued to support them. And the main issue for me is, I think that if we're able to go forward with this annexation, there's a lot of positive things I can do for you, and my office can do for you, one of which, we're very responsive to the residents. So if we have squatters, if you have a squatter in your neighborhood, we'll make sure that that squatter is removed, usually within five days. If there's an abandoned property in your neighborhood, the commission has a list of abandoned properties, and those abandoned properties, once they're on that list, and so, and any of you can inform the commissioners or myself, we will make sure that that property, that the bank takes responsibility for that property, upkeeps it, improves it, and makes it compliant with the law. If it's an unsafe structure, we'll see that it's demolished. We'll take very aggressive action to protect your neighborhood. We also have the anti-hourly rental ordinance. To the extent that there are any motels that have hourly rentals in your, in your neighborhood, and I, I do believe there's at least one, we have an ordinance that says that they can't do that anymore. We also have a joint operations agreement with the city of Miami along A Street, and we will be continuing to enforce that, and that, and it would now apply in your area. Right now, you're in the county, but you would be in the city, and we would be doing joint operations on A Street, anti-prostitution and anti-drug trafficking type actions. So that's very helpful as well to that neighborhood. We have the justice advocate program. If there's a crime that's committed in your neighborhood, we will follow that crime. We will appoint a justice advocate. We have a victim assistance program. We will then follow that through the whole criminal justice system, and we will advocate that that person not get bail, or if they get bail, that it be an appropriate bail. And in addition to that, that they get a appropriate sentence, which is, in our view, a significant sentence. So we, we push very hard for that. And then lastly, principles of inclusion. Our city is committed to diversity and inclusion, in particular, well, in every way, but one way that we have been focusing on is for individuals with disabilities. So there's a lot of ordinance, ordinances like this. I think you will find that our government will be extremely responsive to you. This is the only city that I know of where you can come and you can meet with every commissioner, the mayor, city manager, city attorney, city clerk, all in one day, and we will actually solve your problems.
With respect to sustainability initiatives, the, the city commission has been really at the forefront of environmental, environmental positive legislation to protect the environment, and this is a, a number of initiatives that the city has passed, including, which I, I know you may have seen, the legislation on plastic bags and polystyrene, LEED building code. The city has purchased electric vehicles, charging stations. I want to get to site-specific zoning, because I know that's a concern for many people that are in, in Little Gables, and I want to explain, this is not the first annexation that the city of Coral Gables has done. And the other annexations have occurred in unincorporated Dade County, which become part of the city. So if it was permitted in Miami-Dade County at the time that the property was built, and it's legal, it, when it comes into the city, it will be considered to be legal. There's going to be ultimately a site-specific zoning legislation passed, which you'll have input on, specifically with regard to Little Gables. And so obviously, if there are building code violations, that are building code violations under Miami-Dade County, there are going to be building code violations in Coral Gables. So, and we pointed out here that this had, this has been a successful approach in, in Snapper Creek and Pine Bay Estates, Hammock Lakes, Deering Bay, and Kings Bay. Craig, you want to add something to that?
If I can add one thing to that, in, in those neighborhoods that are mentioned, whenever a specific zoning issue comes up, they always come to my office under Article 6 of our zoning code, which is the Legally Nonconforming section. My office gets directly involved, along with the Planning and Zoning Department, and we, we resolve your issue. And we've always been very respectful, very respectful. In fact, our code requires us to be very respectful of any prior approval that you have, that, that we make sure that you're able to continue doing what you were able to do.
And then, any new construction that you will do will be subject to the site-specific zoning legislation that's passed for your neighborhood. And you'll have the opportunity to weigh in on this. And there are examples that we've put up in other annexations that might not have been permitted within the city of Coral Gables, but in these annexed areas, they are permitted, because they were, there were matters that were permitted when Miami-Dade County had the zoning jurisdiction. We've given some samples here of what, what we believe the cost will be. It all, of course, depends on the assessment of your home. So this is, so if it's assessed for $150,000, it's $620 a year. If it's additional, if it's $250,000, it's $742 a year, and if it's $350,000, it's $864 a year. Now, I want to, there's been some discussion previously, well, when we come into Coral Gables, the values of our homes may increase, our, our valuations may increase. Well, under the Save Our Homes Amendment to the Florida Constitution, the maximum amount your home can actually go up for purposes of the taxes you pay is a maximum of 3 percent. So that's capped off per year, as long as you have that homestead exemption.
Do you want to take over from here?
Just, just a few more slides to, to look at actually the estimated city revenues and expenditures on a yearly basis. Now, the city did a eight-year projection from 2020 to 2027, and then we, we brought that down to an average per year. Revenues that we expect to average about $2 million per year from this, from this area, that'd be a combination of property taxes, solid waste collection, fees, sales taxes, there's actually two sales taxes, and, and the city's fire fee. Expenditures are expected to be $2.3 million per, per year. This takes into account expenditures in solid waste, fire, police, parks, landscape, roadway, and development services, which is also code enforcement. Next steps, if the, if the city commission chooses to pass the resolution this evening, then the next steps would be following of the application with Miami-Dade County within the next two to three weeks. The county review process takes about six to nine months. It can take longer, but that is, that is a normal period for the review process. And then it enters into the public hearing realm of a county. The first will be the Planning, Planning and Zoning Advisory Board. That'll be a, the PAB, it's called, public hearing with, with newspaper notice, as well as individual mail notice to property owners. Much is the mail notice that you've got this evening, which is everybody is, is the residents within the area, as well as those within six, within 600 feet outside. Next, it would go to a county commission committee meeting, that's also a public hearing. And then, and then it would go to the county commission for consideration of the annexation ordinance for two readings. And that's the two readings, because it is an ordinance. And then if the county commission approves it at that point, and on the second reading, the, they would schedule an annexation referendum, which is normally a mail ballot, normally a mail ballot, and just, sped forward there, mail ballot in Little Gables area if the ordinance is approved. So the mail ballot would be of the voters in the Little Gables area only, if it, if it does get that far and be approved by Miami-Dade County. I believe that's the end of our presentation, and we'd be glad to answer any questions. I know the city staff is here, of course, and if the commission, of course, would like to answer, ask any questions.
Yes, I think it's time for, I mean, you've heard the presentation, and it's time for us to hear the, those people who want to speak. And I will be calling you one by one. Please make it brief. You know, you'll have five minutes to speak, whatever your mind is. The first is Alberto Manrara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, commission members and Madam City Manager. I'd, I'd like to see, I'm, I'm a resident of Coral Gables since 1975, living in the same house for 40 years. Could I see by a show of hands how many people here are from Coral Gables? Okay. Because most of what I'm going to say today really is addressed to the, to the residents of Coral Gables, and of course, to the mayor and the commission members. This past Monday was a beautiful day, and I got in my, in my convertible, took the top down, and decided to ride around the area called Little Gables, because I wanted to see what this area looked like. And it's a perfectly fine area. I saw a lot of people in the neighborhood, like you see in a lot of neighborhoods. I drove through the trailer park, the various streets that you can weave in and out, then wasn't, didn't feel like it was a horrible area, or that it was bad people there at all. In fact, most of the people I saw there looked very happy. What is happening with this annexation, though, and the reason I'm addressing this to my fellow residents of Coral Gables, is that almost everything that the consultants have just put up on this slideshow, which is good for Little Gables, is bad for the residents of Coral Gables. It is not good for us. I want to go over just a few other points. Public safety, which typically translates into our police department. The city unfortunately has had a difficult time in being able to fill the empty spots. This was a very hot issue at the recent election, in which Commissioner Keon and Commissioner Mena were, were elected, and you may recall from the public hearings, everybody was concerned, why can't we hire more police officers? Well, now they want to add a bigger area and, and look for more police officers, and we have a shortage right now. What do you think is going to happen to Coral Gables if Little Gables is annexed? While they still haven't been able to add these police officers, well, they're going to drain some of the coverage and service that we have right now in Coral Gables to cover Little Gables. So our public safety is going to deteriorate if we add, if we annex Little Gables. The zoning code. I couldn't believe it, but the consultant just said that they're going to create a special code enforcement for the people in Little Gables, different than the one that the rest of us in Coral Gables have. So if you want to paint your house purple, and I live in Seville, well, I can't. But if you live in Little Gables, you may be able to paint it purple, because it's part of that special code they're going to have. And by the way, if you don't believe me, there is a purple trailer in that, in that trailer park, the beautiful dark purple, but it is purple, and you won't find that in Coral Gables. If you want to have a chain-linked fence in, in, in regular Coral Gables, you won't be able to have a chain-linked fence in your front yard, because it's not allowed by the code. You could in Little Gables. If you want to have no garage, you could in Little Gables, but you cannot in regular Coral Gables. In fact, in just a, kind of off the top of my head count, about one in five houses in Little Gables has a garage. So that means about 80 percent of the houses do not have a garage, which is perfectly fine. It, it's a lifestyle choice. But in Coral Gables, if you live in Coral Gables, you commit to having a garage. And I don't know why we would want to add a section to our city beautiful that doesn't allow or doesn't have the same code enforcement requirements that, that, that we have within the whole of Coral Gables. Financial. Now, the consultants put the numbers on, on the board. It's in their own study, the study prepared, I suspect, by the people in the finance department of the city of Coral Gables. It's going to cost us money. They don't break even, not even in the first eight years. I think they used numbers of around 200,000 to 250,000 shortage. Where do you think that money's going to come from? This is not a zero, this is a zero-sum game. This money's got to come from the pockets of the residents of Coral Gables. It makes no sense that we want to annex an area that doesn't provide for itself. It makes no sense that we want to annex an area that doesn't provide for itself. Now, I've been told by the mayor and by other people in the city administration that there's no explicit or implicit agreement with the county that if we annex Little Gables, the county's going to approve Ponce Davis and the other section, which are high-income areas and would provide a lot of revenue to the city. So we are looking at this, assuming that's not going to happen. So we cannot approve Little Gables with the expectation that these other areas are going to come in and be able to bail out or subsidize Little Gables. Another part, another argument that is used is the geography. We're told that because Little Gables is a little square surrounded in three sides by Coral Gables, that it makes sense to kind of bring them in and put them all together. Well, I would ask the City Commission, under that logic, there's a piece of Coral Gables that extends north of 8th Street up to Flagler. It's like a little peninsula that goes north. Probably you've driven through it some time or another. That area is surrounded in three sides by areas that are not Coral Gables. Under the logic of including Little Gables, because it is surrounded in three sides by Coral Gables, this other part, we should tell them, hey, we're going to cast you off, because you're no longer... You're surrounded on three sides by areas that are not Coral Gables. So the geography aspect, the geography of reason makes no sense. I want to point out what perhaps is the most important, which is the quality of life. And you know, when I saw the people in the trailer park, I felt bad that if they get annexed into Coral Gables, say goodbye to your trailer park. Notwithstanding anything else, the city is already in communication with the owner of the trailer park.
Mr. Manrara, please wind it down.
I am... I'm almost done, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you. The quality of life is very important for Coral Gables. We have built a brand, which is called Coral Gables. Why would we tarnish this brand by bringing in an area that is not like the rest of Coral Gables? And bigger is not necessarily better. Adding 2,530 residents doesn't make Coral Gables a better place for those who are here already. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, please do not vote in favor of annexation.
Thank you very much. Mr. Manrara, I would like to... Thank you. I'd like to address some of your points. You can sit down. I would like to address some of your points regarding the police. We have filled our police deficiencies today. We had 16 at election time, and a month ago, we had four, and today, I think, we have filled most of those. So we don't have a police shortage today, if you count retirements. Specialized code, we had the same provisions for Gables Estates, for Hammock Lakes, for Pine Bay Estates, for Deering Bay, for Kings Bay, for Snapper Creek. We had exactly the same provisions for them, except that this is Little Gables, and maybe you're being a little too aristocratic in this, and you don't accept the exceptions in wealthier areas, and you object to them here. I don't find that very convincing, frankly. Their zoning code that they have today, if it is consistent with the county code, if it is legal, it will stay legal, because they had it there, and it is legal for them. Financial, yes, I hear that, but we have $180 million budget and $250,000 per year to square off the city and incorporate an area into Coral Gables that will enhance our safety and that will enhance the surrounding neighborhood. And I'm talking about Mendoza, I'm talking about Cortez, I'm talking about Casilla. I don't think that's wrong. Anyway, the Coral Gables brand is very, very valuable, and I think I speak for making it, enhancing Little Gables and making it part of Coral Gables in order for them to enjoy our brand. The second person to speak is...
Mr. Mayor, just two points I need to make legally. One, I just want to be clear with everyone, the Board of Architects does apply in Little Gables. That's a legal issue, and it does. You will have to go through the Board of Architects. The second issue is, we have a decorum code, and I would just ask, you know, this could become a tense discussion, and we do have people who live in Little Gables, and that's their homes. So I'd ask that, you know, say what you have to say, and make it a good debate, but please be respectful of each other's homes and do not applaud. You're not allowed to applaud; it violates our decorum code.
All right. Lynn Bluestein, please. Ms. Bluestein, you will have three minutes. Mr. City Clerk, will you keep track of the time, or do you want me to do it?
Yes, ma'am, keeping track.
You are keeping track?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Yes, ma'am. Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have stage fright, so I prepared a short statement. I have no intention of arguing with anyone. I am a peace-loving, guitar-picking massage therapist. There are many reasons I'm against annexation, and the main reason, and the main thing I want to mention is this. I've heard some neighbors say that they will have to move, as they won't be able to afford to stay in their beloved homes. I could be one of them, and someone recently told me that, quote, "We will just have to move." I've been in my home for 28 years. I personally find that sad and distressing, and hope anyone who feels that way might check your heart. And to those who are insensitive to older people and cruel in your online posts, you too will get older, and hopefully wiser. To those who think our green and blue waste containers are eyesores, I think the never-ending sight of so many bright green and blue dog poop bags left in the Gables' front yard craters are worse. I believe a percentage of people who vote for annexation will eventually regret it. Whatever the outcome, I will still get on my bike and go search when I see a post for a lost pet. I will still be a good neighbor. I hope we can all be kinder to each other, even in the face of our differences.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bluestein. Appreciate it.
Please do not applaud.
The next is...
I'm trying to be respectful, but it's against our code. Please do not applaud.
Ms. Martucci, please. Ms. Martucci?
We all agree with you about that screening feedback.
Yeah. 430 Mendoza Avenue. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. I'm one of those that live... I live in Mendoza, 430 Mendoza. I have Little Gables across the street, and I am for annexation. I think it makes sense to square off the area. I think it will be positive for both Little Gables and for Coral Gables. As many that gentlemen said, that there's not many nice houses in Little Gables I've driven by. My daughter just bought a house last year in Little Gables. It's a very pretty house. There's a lot of ugly houses in Coral Gables that are not kept up. What makes Coral Gables pretty is the tree canopy, the services, the fire, the police, and for that, I am in agreement to annex Little Gables.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor, with your indulgence, I would like to address both people pro and con for a second. I live at 1801 Casilla Street, Coral Gables, Florida. I am about three and a half blocks, two and a half blocks away from the beginning of Little Gables. And I want to promote the idea of not just Coral Gables, but cities in general. I've lived in the city of Hialeah, I lived in the city of South Miami for about seven years, and I've lived in Coral Gables for now five years. I'm a CPA. I find... I have a small family with two children and my wife, and we love where we live. We find the city to be a wonderful representation of what Miami and everyone can be, and what if we all get together and improve an area, what can be accomplished. My general perspective is, annexation is a long game. It's not an immediate issue. Yes, there are going to be growing pains, but ultimately, the annexed area will become much like Coral Gables is, and it will look a lot like the issues that we don't have today. There might be an ugly trailer, there might be situations with a particular park, there will be situations with code enforcement, of chain-linked fences that we may not like, et cetera. But as time passes, as the properties are repurchased, as the code moves, all those issues slowly but surely will go away. It will not have a detrimental effect in the immediate aspect of the city. It will eventually be a positive aspect to all of us. I lived in South Miami for about seven years. I lived in the north end of South Miami. I don't know if you guys know, but that is a weird section, the only section of Miami which one house belongs to South Miami, one house belongs to the county, one house belongs to... So it's very disjointed. I love the fact that in Coral Gables and South Miami, I had the police within three or four minutes in my house, any issue that I had, a problem with the neighbor. I had a situation with my garbage pickup. I knew who Doug was, the guy that picked up my garbage. I could tell him, hey, do you mind coming in a little later and pass again, because I have something happen? That type of service, that's for human connection, that happens in cities, that happens in Coral Gables. That disjointiveness that happens in South Miami, for which I was a big proponent of annexation there, it is also a problem that you have in this end of the county and this end of Coral Gables. Police officers have to go around in these areas. It is a double work that is unnecessary. For every resident, especially residents who have lived in Little Gables for a long time, you're protected, and I want you to understand you're protected. The Save Our Home keeps your taxes capped at 3% every single year. So whatever the issue you have about the taxes increasing monumentally, it's not that big of a deal. I can tell you, I have a house in the city of Miami, I pay more in the city of Miami than I do in the city of Coral Gables for my house that I rented there. So Gables is not that monumental an issue, and you get what you pay for. You honestly do. Those people up there, yeah, they're politicians, but most of them are...
Thank you. Thank you.
Most of them, yes, but most of them could make a lot more money doing what they do on a regular basis than sitting in that commission. They do it because they honestly love this thing, and they honestly do love public service. They're not in there, as in the city of Miami, sorry, because they're going to get some gain. It is a unique place. It's a unique place in Miami, it's a unique place in the world. The reason we call it the city beautiful is its architectural style, is something that could become part of what you have every day. It is something that I think I will never leave, so long as I live, and I absolutely love, and everyone should welcome. It's an automatic increase in your property values. You're becoming richer just by changing the name. So it makes sense.
Thank you. Tell me about it. Okay. Thank you very much, Sarah. Thank you. Thank you. What did you drop there?
I don't know.
That happened when you offended politicians.
You got struck.
You got struck.
It's the lightning bolt that came down.
I'm not used to speaking out either.
You have to speak closer to the mic. We can't hear you.
I'm not used to speaking out either, but here I am. I'm from the Little Gables also, and as you can tell, I am not for annexation. Building and zoning laws aren't going to, as for your other speaker, are not going to stay the same. Eventually, we will fall under the same building and zoning laws, and we will have to abide by them, and we will have to pay more money. And this is a rather expensive thing for a lot of us, and I don't want to have to move from my community. We, you know, it's an area that I like, it's my neighbors or my friends, I would like to stay there. As for crime, I've been keeping crime statistics for our area since 2013, and we, on a monthly basis, have about between four and 12 incidents in our areas. I don't think that's anymore. I don't think it's any... It may be less, it seems like it would be less than Coral Gables. I'm sure you have a fine police department, but our crime rate has lowered since 2013. We have worked very hard to get it lower, and it has become low. So I think we... I would prefer that it stay the way it does. It's just how I feel. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. You have to get us one of those shirts. Thank you.
Commissioner, thank you for taking, providing this opportunity for input from the community, not only from Little Gables, but also the Coral Gables residents. I had a few questions. I don't know if this could be answered today. Brett Gillis, 915 Ferdinand Street.
Giving their name and address, just remember that.
915... 915 Ferdinand Street, Coral Gables. I had a couple questions regarding the beautification plan if Little Gables is annexed, in terms of what would happen with the tree canopy there, as well as the trailer park near the cemetery, and also the process that would be undertaken to patrol and maintain the safety along 8th Street. I live very close to 8th Street, and I can tell you that as you go east from the Country Club Prado area, the farther east you go, the less... There's not as much surveillance going on there, and I think that that's the area where there's a lot of activity at night that can be perceived as more dangerous. And I don't have the specific crime statistics, but just from talking to neighbors and other people, we generally consider that area to be a big concern.
East of Country Club Prado?
As you go east, the farther you get from, say, Red Road and 8th Street, the farther east you go, so closer to Little Gables.
I'm sorry, the farther east you go, what?
So the area I live in...
Yeah, I was concerned about the activity and appearance of crime.
With the prostitution and motels and...
The farther east you go from Country Club...
The farther east you get from there. So it's generally much safer. I feel much more comfortable walking near 8th Street and Red Road versus Lejeune and 8th Street. So that's where my concern is, and also with the motels and the trailer park. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Just so you're aware, that area that you mentioned, that we will be seeking to extend our joint enforcement zone there as well. So it will be helpful to that area.
Yeah. All right. John Talamas, 522 San Esteban Avenue, Coral Gables.
You can stay there.
I didn't ask to speak, but I wanted to.
Oh, no, but your card is here.
And Mr. Mayor, just so that you know, if there are any questions that you want to direct to staff, we're prepared to answer whatever questions.
Why don't you come up here, please? So we all can see you. I'm sorry, I called on you, but your card is here.
Oh, yeah, but I checked off not to speak.
Oh, oh.
Oh, you were just sitting here.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Of all... I grew up in Coral Gables since 1950. Do you hear me?
Yes.
I live at 522 San Esteban. I live by the high school, and we have a lot of traffic, we have a lot of people cutting through to get to work and home from work. The collection uses our neighborhood for test driving, and... But, you know, it's... I grew up on Zamora and Segovia since 1959, and I own a little house on Mendoza. Mendoza, the whole street of Mendoza doesn't have... They don't have garages. They haven't been forced to put garages. There's a couple of houses, there's a few houses on Zamora between Segovia and Lejeune that they have shingle roofs, because they're wood houses. And they look nice, they're cute, they've been well-maintained. My mother lives on Zamora, and we have her living there because it's cheaper for her to stay there than to move into an apartment that would cost her a lot more money than for her to live in her beautiful Coral Gables house. One of the reasons we like living in Coral Gables since 1959, my whole family has bought houses in Coral Gables, is because we like the services. We like the garbage pickups, the guys are... They are well-vetted. I know some of the guys that come and pick up our garbage. We always say hi to these guys. The fire rescue is excellent, and let me tell you, we've called fire rescue, and they're there in minutes, and it's a great safety issue to have, knowing that these guys will come in minutes. If you're having a heart attack, unfortunately, my father died of a heart attack, and he died at the hospital because we made the big mistake of driving him there. But it's nice to know that the fire rescue, now we've learned our lesson, if you have a problem in Coral Gables, you call fire rescue, they're there in minutes. I have... I grew up in Zamora since 1959. We rode our bicycles. My uncle had a house on 13th Street, and the area has... It's coming up. You have new people that are buying properties, and I think over time, over time, you're over time, you're gonna see the area improve. Your property value's gonna go up, it's gonna be capped at 3%, but you're gonna, you're gonna pay your Dade County portion. If you're really worried about the portion of your taxes that's expensive, it's not the Coral Gables portion, it's not the Dade County portion, it's the school board portion. That's the part that doesn't get capped, okay? But you're gonna see, you're gonna see your property assessment go up a little bit because there's gonna be people coming in, buying maybe your next-door neighbor, but because they're gonna pay $400,000, $500,000 for the next-door neighbor, it doesn't mean that your taxes are gonna go up because your assessment is gonna be capped. And like I said, the, like, I do believe Mendoza doesn't have, none of the houses on Mendoza, most of the houses on Mendoza don't have garages from Cortez to Lejeune Road. We have houses with shingle roofs because they cannot support, they're wood houses, they cannot support a tile roof.
Please finish up, sir.
And I support the annexation. I think it should have been done a long time ago, and I think it'll be a great line of defense for the city of Coral Gables, and I think it'll enhance Coral Gables in the long run.
Thank you very much, sir. Karen Shane?
You know, it's only the law, but I guess I'm having a hard time. Just remember to try to keep it very limited.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Karen Shane, I live at 4375 Southwest 13th Street. I've been a resident, homeowner of Little Gable, in Little Gables for over 23 years. At that time, annexation had been a movement already in motion. Of course, the idea of being part of Coral Gables was a very attractive one because Coral Gables is a very attractive city. But it wasn't until I lived here for a while that I could see the limitations of being in an enclave in unincorporated Miami-Dade County. I saw the police response times were quite inadequate. I saw the developers were chipping away at our residential neighborhood with very little or no resistance from the county. I was appalled to see that before my time, several properties on Southwest 11th Street on the east side of Lejeune, well into the neighborhood, had been bought up to create a parking lot for a business on Lejeune, severely reducing the aesthetics and property values of that area. I saw the lack of code enforcement in our neighborhood which allowed disregard and deterioration of properties to fester, which kept property values down and frustration among neighbors. And I saw the difference in the tree canopy. Now with the prospects of becoming part of the city beautiful, I am personally excited about the investment that the city will make to line our streets with trees, to having faster emergency response times, and bringing higher market values for our homes with relatively small increase in taxes. I'm excited about having a city that will fight to keep our neighborhood residential. Back in 2003, Coral Gables held a community meeting for Little Gables regarding annexation. At the time, Mayor Valdis Volle, who was mayor at the time as well, said, "We welcome you with open arms." We presented the city with over 600 petitions, which have been collecting dust in my attic for 13 years. No further action was taken at that time. Now that we have come this far, I want to thank the city for having the vision of inviting Little Gables to be a part of Big Gables. Lastly, I would like to talk about emergency services, which I feel are the most important issue. I want to pay tribute to a young woman by the name of Malita Jerick, an FIU grad student who is the victim of a hit-and-run four and a half years ago. She stepped out in front of her home to cross the street on Southwest 11th Street. It is my understanding that the 911 calls got bounced around from Coral Gables to the city of Miami and back to the county finally, and they took far too long to get to her. I don't know if she would have lived had she gotten there sooner, but there's always that chance in a life-or-death situation. On a lighter note, a friend of mine who's a family physician who resides in Coral Gables told me that she once stopped on Lejeune in Little Gables to help someone who had been in a traffic accident. Her call to 911 also got bounced around. She said that if this were to ever happen again, she would personally drag the person into the city of Coral Gables.
Thank you, ma'am. Will you wind it up?
Yes. Again, thank you for considering annexing our neighborhood into the city, and we hope that you will welcome us with open arms.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you very much. That's a very impressive folder you have there. I was afraid you were going to read the whole thing. Thank you. Benito Garcia? What?
He left.
Oh, I'm sorry, he had to leave. Okay. Luciana Gonzalez?
Hello?
Good evening. My name is Luciana Gonzalez. I'm a Little Gables resident at 4605 Southwest 12th Street. I just want to say a few things that haven't been said. I do support the annexation to Coral Gables, and I want to thank you for all your time and effort for this comprehensive amount of studies and product, work product that has been put together by the staff, and as well as your research and support and meeting with some of us. So I want to thank you for that. I just want to cover three things. First one, county. The county is not in the business of municipal services. The county should not be in the business of municipal services. I think that all of us would benefit if the county were to divest itself of those services so it can focus on regional issues that affect all of us here in this room today. Transportation is one of them. We have to increase public transportation to decrease the traffic amongst the streets that we all live in. Public transportation, trolleys, et cetera, you understand what I'm saying. Resiliency efforts, sea level rise and resiliency is something that the county needs to be paying a lot closer attention to, as well as emergency management and the airport, the seaport. There are plenty of things that the county can do without having to serve municipal services like trash collection and police efforts and life safety. As far as the Coral Gables residents are concerned, I think the North Gables area is the one that is most affected by not having Little Gables be part of this community because of the policing efforts and the quality of life. There was a gentleman that was talking about as you go east towards Lejeune, there's a clear change. I totally agree with that. But if there were an annexation effort that would be inclusive of that, that would address a lot of those concerns and improve the quality of life of the North Gables residents in particular. And as far as Little Gables residents are concerned, we already make part of this community. Our children go to the Coral Gables schools, whether they're public or private. I think I speak on behalf of a lot of parents here who, whose children do attend Coral Gables Elementary, whose children went to ECC right across the Biltmore. So we exercise at the youth center, we patronize the businesses of downtown Coral Gables, so we're already part of this fabric. And we just want to just be formalized in this relationship that already exists. So I want to echo the sentiments of Karen Shane, who eloquently spoke in support of the Little Gables annexation, and I just want to thank you again for your services.
Thank you very much, ma'am. I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, Jose Gonzalez?
Good evening. My name is Jose Gonzalez. I reside at 4605 Southwest 12th Street and the area affectionately known as the Little Gables. I'd like to thank all the city officials and staff who are making the time out of their families' lives to be here today and allowing citizens like myself and my wife to be heard. I'm here tonight grateful for the opportunity to announce my position in favor of the annexation to the city of Coral Gables for the following reasons. I would like to avail myself of all the services provided by the city of Coral Gables. Currently, we're paying for services that we don't feel meet our expectations. Police response times, medical response times, improved drainage, street maintenance, waste pickup, and as presented, more bulky waste pickup, lighting, enforcement of our codes, more trees, parks, and equally important, my understanding that since annexation provides these services, our property values will increase when annexed to the city beautiful, and that means that our homes will most likely be more marketable, attractive, and finally, become one with the three sides it now borders. Lastly, annexation would also allow suburban residents such as myself a voice in this government within the community in which I reside. The county, despite its great leadership, is affected by such a large scale that I feel that my voice has not been heard. For these reasons and more, I trust that we are considered for an official annexation resolution for the submittal of annexation application for Miami-Dade County. Thank you again for your time, your patience, and your understanding. Good night.
Thank you very much, sir. Okay, Enrique Suarez? What? You're gonna pass. Osvaldo Rodriguez?
My name is Osvaldo Rodriguez. I am the homeowner at 4291 Southwest 11th Street. I've been a homeowner for the past 23 years in Little Gables. Very happy that you've taken into the consideration of annexing our Little Gables neighborhood. It's because of the services that you provide to the residents of the city of Coral Gables, we really would like to be part of the city of Coral Gables as well. Now, the county provides us with a lot of services, and unfortunately, the county, no one from the county is here tonight to perhaps assist us in this decision, because we cost, the city of, the Little Gables neighborhood costs a lot of money to the county, and those services we're receiving from the county are being brought to us from the Doral service of the Miami-Dade County services. Perhaps the next thing that the county will consider is perhaps giving us to another city, like the city of Miami or the city of Doral, for them not to be able to service us. So that will create a lot more problems, not only for the residents of our nearby Coral Gables, city of Coral Gables, but also for the residents in our Little Gables neighborhood. Not only it's gonna be a lot more expensive for us to pay the taxes for the city of Miami or the city of Doral and receive those services from so far away. So again, I really support annexation, and thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you, sir. George Cody?
Good evening.
Good evening to you.
Your address, please?
I was born in Doctor's Hospital two years after it opened in 1951.
You're not that old.
Yes.
What's your address?
I've been in this area my whole life.
But your address?
I have property...
Your address, sir.
...in Coral Gables and in Little Gables.
His address is 4501 Southwest 10th.
Yes. The house was built in 2009. I initially came here to say that I'm against the annexation. Coral Gables has developed over the years, too many rules with no exceptions, like the situation at the house I have on Toledo Street right off of University Drive. The house is still in probate. They have all these enforcement rules that, the house is not in my name, but I've been paying for it, and there's issues with the trash pickup. For instance, I had a, I put one small box, about eight by 10, in a trash can. They wouldn't pick it up because it wasn't in a plastic bag, and I go, "It's only one little box, it's clean." So there's just a lot of things that Coral Gables does that make life impossible for me. The one thing I will say about Coral Gables, the police and fire department are excellent, and I'm against the annexation. And I hope you guys make some exceptions to your rules under situations when properties become under an estate, and there's, it's a difficult situation to deal with.
We actually do.
We do.
You should speak to Mr. Lee. You should speak to Craig Lee, the city attorney, and discuss that with him so he can help you resolve those issues.
Yes.
We do.
Be happy to talk to you.
Yes. So when this is over, please, talk with Mr. Lee.
See, you got something out of this.
There you go. Yes, we do.
All right. The next is Alberto Portolani, or Porgolani. Yes, sir. Can you give us your name and address, please?
Yes. Alberto Portolani, 4619 Southwest 15th Street. Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Mayor, and probably one of the younger living in Little Gables. It's only four years that I'm living, be living over there. You can hear from my accent that I'm not, I was born in Miami, I'm from Italy. And we move with all our family, and if, I think, my kids go to the Coral Gables School. We use all the facility. We like go spend time in the San Salvador Park with the kids, with the tennis. We go in the, you know, all the area of Gables. When I have clients, very often, I bring to Coral Gables because for me, it's an amazing city. There is a restaurant, there is hotel, and I like to, if I think about that, I spend almost the 90% of my time in Coral Gables for this, for sure. I'm glad, I think it's a kind of honor, have your attention to, you know, be part, give us the possibility to be part of this city. I have one question. I've done permit, I have done work last year, past year, in the city of Miami, and it wasn't easy. And first, I tell you the truth, I'm not very scared about the rules. I'm more scared about the very not professional people. That is carrying me more than the rules, because the rules you can handle. For this, in, first. The second is, I need to do another work for this, and I have to open a new permit. If I open right now, what is gonna happen in the transition time? Meaning, if the annexation go true and they happen before I finish my permit, I have to change everything, or there is a time of period where we can handle. I don't know if you already answered before, but I didn't get it. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. You can talk to our city attorney later on after the meeting.
Yes, Craig Coller and Peter Iglesias can answer your question. Peter is the building official and the assistant city manager, and Craig is our consultant. But I think you'll be satisfied with the response.
Okay, the last person I have here, and if anybody else wants to speak, please fill out one of these cards and give it to me. Adela Monroe? Ms. Monroe? Adela Monroe? No, Adela Monroe is not here.
She must have left.
She must have left, I hope so, or else somebody filled this for her. All right, the public hearing part of this is closed, and now, Mr. City Attorney, we will proceed with discussion by the commission?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this resolution, the commission could discuss, it requires a vote of a majority of the commission to proceed. There need to be a motion second and a vote.
All right, what is the feeling of the commission? Please?
I'm, yeah, I'm comfortable with the annexation. I welcome this community into the city of Coral Gables. We have a very diverse community, both culturally and financially. I think all of those, all of that diversity lends...
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, we have one more person, and... Do you wish to speak, sir? Come over.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You can submit the card after you speak. Good.
My name is Hector Alvarez. I've lived in Little Gables for 49 years. I own a lot of different properties in the area.
Could you give the address?
1301 South Lejeune Road.
Thank you.
And I have a lot of tenants in the area that are sweating bullets. A lot of them are non-registered voters, a lot of them don't speak English, a lot of them are very scared. I have one that's been with us 45 years, one that's been with us 35 years, and they're scared because they know the rent's gonna go up. And for me, it's a great benefit getting, you know, getting to be part of Coral Gables. My property's gonna go up. But I'm really speaking here more for a lot of those... Gables, my property's gonna go up, but I'm really speaking here more for a lot of those people that have been my tenants and neighbors for so many years, and they're gonna have to leave the area, and I feel bad for them. So even though I'm gonna benefit economically, I know already a lot of people that I will not be there five years from now, and that's the only thing that I wanted to tell you. Oh, and one question that I did have. The little area that I own that has like different names, and all the plaits and all the maps, it shows some of the old names that it had. Do you know what's gonna happen with the naming of the streets, like Thirteen Terrace is gonna become on Teal?
Yes, uh, no. If you want to adopt names, you can adopt names, and some areas have adopted names. Other areas, like Pine Bay Estates, would rather keep the numbers, and they kept the numbers. That's up to your choice.
Well, no, the reason I was asking is because when you're coming from the, from the cemetery, a lot of the streets that are coming from Coral Gables that are already merged into some of our streets, are they gonna keep those same names or not?
You, as I said, it's up to you, it's up to your choice.
It's up to us or up to the-
Yes, it's up to you, sir.
Us individually?
No, not individually, up to the, you know, we have democracy, and if more people vote to have names, you will have names.
So it'll be voted on, is what I'm saying. Okay. I just wanted to say about my neighbors, period.
Thank you, sir. Can I have the card?
Well, you'll preserve your neighbors if you don't raise their rent.
Yeah.
So I would say that that's not, that's not an annexation problem or a city problem. I think that that's a-
Thank you, sir.
That's a decision that you'll make.
Okay, I'm sorry, but the public hearing is officially closed.
Hopefully, you'll retain the rents that you currently have.
The public hearing is officially closed. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry to have interrupted.
No, that's fine. No, I, I welcome you, I, I think that we are a diverse city. I think the, the two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars a year that we project is the difference between what the revenue to the city is opposed to the expenditure to the city for a short period of time is not significant enough to not make the decision to annex this area. I, I, this is for both the residents of the City of Coral Gables and the people coming in. It's very interesting to me when I hear all the time about taxpayer money and people talk about the taxes on their home and the residential taxes. We have a budget of about a hundred-and-eighty-nine million dollars a year, so it's like almost a hundred-and-ninety million dollars a year. I think our revenue from taxation property values is around seventy-nine thousand, eighty thousand, eighty million a year? It's about eighty million a year. So there's a hundred million dollars in revenue that comes into the city that is not, it is not property taxes, it is other income that comes from a variety of sources in the city. And of that approximately eighty million that comes into the city, probably at least, at least minimally, forty percent of that comes from the downtown and from non-residential or, or properties that are not homesteaded. So when you look at it, there's about maybe forty million dollars a year out of that hundred-and-eighty-nine million dollar budget that comes from homesteaded properties, and that's being generous. So we have the city we have because of the diversity of our city, because we have it downtown and from a lot of other revenue sources, and, you know, from it being well-managed by our staff, and I would believe from the fiduciary responsibility of those elected to office. So I, I welcome you, and I hope that this annexation goes through.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I just, rather than just having, giving our statements, I sort of wanna have a little conversation here, because my mind is not a hundred percent made up one way or another, this was helpful today. A few things that go through my mind, and I would like to hear from, from staff on specific questions, so through the manager if it's okay.
Of course.
Diana Gomez, as well as Frank Fernandez, I'm gonna have questions for both of you. I'll start with the financial, because what, what's happening for me, and I think probably makes most sense, if you guys walk up to the podium, so the rest of the crowd, we know who you are, the rest of the crowd may not. So when I'm thinking about this, I think about, like, we were elected by the City of Coral Gables residents, what's the impact to the city, what's the impact to the residents? You know, Mr. Monroe, I think couched the issue properly, the way I've been thinking about it, and I will tell you, I have been tending to lean against the annexation, but like, I've tried to keep an open mind throughout the entire process, and a lot of good statements were made here. Mrs. Gonzalez spoke earlier about policing impact, which I wanna ask, you know, our assistant city manager about that, but first, I wanna start with the financial question. When you look at the annexation report, which the city manager mentioned earlier, and I think there were copies outside, and they have gone around quite a bit, page two, the net difference, and I know the mayor has touched upon this, as well as, as the vice mayor, Keon, and also towards the middle of the document, it's not, it's not a numbered page, but it's the last two pages of exhibit one, where it says the annexation estimate Little Gables, which is the number that, that was mentioned by both, but I see, you know, twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen, the surplus to deficit, and this is the last page of exhibit one. So if you're flipping through the pages, look for exhibit two and then go one page prior to that. You know, I, I guess it's, it's too, I guess we're assuming that it's gonna take a while if we approve-
It'd be page eighteen.
It is page eighteen?
Yep.
So if you flip through the pages, Diana, it looks like this.
Yeah.
See there?
I see so.
Yeah, so the very last line, if you look at the very last line, so I, I would assume that there are hash marks in twenty-eighteen and twenty-nineteen because the process could take that long.
Correct.
I assume that's the assumption that, that was made. Did you prepare this?
Keith.
Got it, okay.
In my office.
So then twenty-twenty, it says a loss of six-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand dollars, and then it trends lower and lower to two-hundred-and-forty-one thousand dollars in twenty-twenty-seven. I guess a very basic question, I mean, this analysis that was prepared by your department is based on the experience that I guess we've had with other areas of the city and other annexations, is that accurate?
So if you look-
If you can walk me through how this was prepared and what this was based, based on, and I apologize if we've asked you this question before in previous presentations, but I see a lot of people here, people were spending, not spending time with their family tonight to be here tonight, so I wanna make sure we have a full, for lack of a better term, record so that everyone understands, and, and to, and refresh my memory.
Sure, so if you, if you flip to the first page of that, or the per page right prior, where you look at the revenues, you'll see that there is the percentages in which we added an increase each year. So for instance, the property tax, there's a three percent each year increase, so the revenues are increasing each year by three percent, sales taxes increasing by one-point-five percent each year, so that's what we did for estimating purposes of what the revenues come in. That's why the, the net change goes down in the later years, because we are saying that there will be some increase, and these increases are based on conservative budgeting, how we budget for the rest of the city. So if you see that each year the revenues are increasing slightly based on those factors, and then the expenditures, they start in twenty-twenty because that's when we believe the expenditures will, if the timeline, the conservative timeline, we're not sure exactly, but by the time we get the ta- property taxes in and everything, all the expenditures start happening, you'll see that the expenditures are pretty much level each year, and so that's how the, the worksheet works.
The, can I ask a follow-up question on that? The three percent increase in property tax that you're estimating, so you're basically assuming every home at a, at a, at a minimum is gonna have the Save Our Homes three percent increase that they're entitled to, but obviously, any property that sells will no longer be subject to that, so is, is it fair to say that the property tax revenue number at least that you're using is basically the lowest number it could be?
The lowest number it could be?
So, so it is a conservative number because we just don't know what's gonna happen. So we like to budget and look at it conservatively, yes.
But if a home sells, sells as you can, as you say, you know, the Save Our Homes, the limit will not be applicable.
The experience with, I, I know it's been fifteen years since we annexed Kings Bay, roughly? Something like that, Mr. Mayor?
I have no idea. I wasn't here.
Okay, I think it was right after your, your first tenure. I know it's a little bit different of a neighborhood. Have we done a comparison with what occurred with Kings Bay and the values and the expenses and the cost? Because I remember, I believe, actually, it was two thousand two and two thousand three when I was annexed, because I remember I was a volunteer for the city that year, so I do recall that. I, I don't know if that has been done, I would like to see that, because I believe what we're voting on today, assume, I'm just making the assumption that we approve to keep the process moving forward, as the mayor mentioned at the beginning of this meeting, if we all approve it today, it doesn't mean the annexation's gonna go through. If we don't approve it today, it doesn't mean it stopped. This is just one stop in the, in the long path to get there.
It does mean that it stops.
It does mean it stops.
Unless we bring it up again.
Yes, I mean unless you, you do another vote at another time.
Okay, so if it does get passed today, I would like to see a comparison. I, I don't wanna put you on the spot now, but I would like to see that at a, at a later conversation.
If it does pass today, we'll have several of the teams involved.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to report that Commissioner Lago could not be here physically, but he is here on the phone. I have him on the phone now, so he is listening. Now, according to the law, he can participate and vote if, if, as long as a majority, a quorum is in the room, which a quorum is in the room here, but I would like if, if the commission to do a motion second and a vote to allow him to vote by phone.
So, but he has, he has missed most of the discussion, hasn't he?
He has missed most of the discussion.
What is the pleasure of the commission?
It's a legislative item.
He's been very involved in the process, I know he's met with many residents.
All right, motion has been made, is there a second?
I second it.
All right, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed?
Right, and I'd just like to know for the record, this is a legislative item, it's not quasi-judicial, so he doesn't have to be here for the whole public hearing, and he could still participate and vote.
Thank you.
Okay, so those are my only questions to you, Diana, and, so thank you, but if, if it does get passed today, I would like to see a comparison.
What happened in, in that area?
Specifically Kings Bay.
Okay.
Because I know it's, I know it's not an apples-to-apples comparison, but maybe as far as the trends, as to personnel, maybe we can learn something from that as well.
And also do it in, say, Pine Bay Estates, which is a small enclosed-
Yeah, good idea.
-three streets, you know, or four streets, and then do that too there.
So the only thing that we would really be able to look at is perhaps property taxes, because we can get the data pulled out, but that would be it, just what happened in the property taxes in those areas, if we get-
What about personnel at the police, at the fire station?
I don't know if we-
Well, we built the fire station after that.
We built the fire station, no, before that.
Before that, in anticipation of, because of Dearing Bay.
Can we just look at the personnel number that were sta- that were stationed at that station prior to-
Why don't I make a, a suggestion that you speak with her and get the information you, you want, as opposed to, Commissioner, may I?
I'd like a point of clarification on something that just came up, which is, if we vote yes today, Craig?
Yes.
It goes to the county.
Yes.
So that would be it, as far as our vote, yea or nay on this subject, is that not right?
Well, and Craig, Craig Coller, can you get up, please? Yes, you're gonna be voting today to authorize and basically direct the city manager and I to submit an application to the county.
So that's it? That, that would be, there's no taking, you know, saying no later, this is, this would be approving from the city's perspective, this issue. I understand it would still be subject to county approval.
Yes, except-
Is that correct?
Yes, except that I believe there's an interlocal agreement at some point, doesn't that come to the city commission, Craig?
There would be an interlocal agreement. I, I haven't seen this in the thirty-six years I've been with the county, but I think that there could be a point, probably well before the election, where the city chose to withdraw the application, but I, this is kind of uncharted waters, because I've never seen it before, but the, of course, there is an interlocal agreement, which the, which goes with the annexation. If the city doesn't agree to it, so I, I, I think there's, and the charter does require that you consent to the annexation, and annexation can't happen without your consent. So I believe, it would be my opinion that you could withdraw the application at a later date.
That is my opinion as well, and also you could, you have to approve the interlocal agreement.
Yeah, right, and if the interlocal is not approved-
So we would have two bites of the apple.
Is not approved, then it's, the county will not wanna go forward with the annexation if we don't do the interlocal.
Right, but that, I mean, that, that would kind of be pulling the rug out from under the process at that point, I don't think that would be the proper way to deal with
I mean, we're looking at nine months down the road for that.
Right, and, and, and just again, to clarify, because there was a statement from Commissioner Casala and some commentary, if, for example, we didn't vote on this yet, if, for example, we waited to our next commission meeting a couple weeks from now, that wouldn't quote-unquote halt the process, right? We still have time to do that, would there be any significant prejudice to doing that?
Well, I, there wouldn't be prejudice, but I would announce a continuation of the meeting to a date certain, because there was mail notice, and we would just treat it just like a zoning matter.
But, but public hearing and a vote are two different things, isn't that right?
No, but we, we mailed notices, this, and look at all these people here.
And they spoke.
You could, you could move, legally, you could move to continue the matter to a date and time certain, really a date certain at our next commission meeting.
Right.
And we would probably set a time certain for the residents as well, and then they could, you could vote at that time, but there'd have to be a motion second and a, a vote to continue.
Okay, I would like to speak.
Good, yeah, if I could just say one more thing, just to sort of dot the i on where I'm going with this. I'm speaking for myself, I'm frankly not prepared to move forward with this tonight. I, I've heard a lot of commentary from a lot of people, I wanna frankly applaud all of you, I think everybody's comments were very thoughtful, I understand this is an issue that, you know, is a passionate issue for people at your home, and it, it means a lot to everybody here, and I think everybody's very respectful of each other. I, I for one, would like some time to sort of digest some of the comments I've heard, and some of the answers we've received, some of, there's been some minor updates to our report. I also frankly, and perhaps you gentlemen can speak to this as well, I have some concerns about this proceeding prior to the other annexation. Now, I understand it's two separate issues, that you vote separately, but I'm not sure I understand the benefit of proceeding with one before the other, particularly in these specific examples where one, or I guess two technically of the three neighborhoods, create significant positive revenue and the other does not. And I would have some concerns about proceeding with one without knowing, frankly, what the county's gonna do on High Pines and Ponce Davis. So I think that's a broader discussion that we can discuss now or, or later.
I would like to, yeah, we can discuss it now, and I, I would like to make some comments on this annexation. Insofar as waiting for High Pines and Ponce Davis, if we wait for that, I think that that will kill the annexation of Little Gables, and it will kill it, because even in that area, they're not sure what they want. And I have been to the two meetings we've had with them, and one at a church down south, and the other one at a historic, the house, whatever it was, and they were just not sure what areas were comprehended in our annexation or their annexation petition, so it's also-
Who's they, when you say they?
The neighbors, the neighbors.
The High Pines.
The High Pine, Ponce Davis neighbors.
Well, High Pines.
Yeah, and they just weren't very much sure of what they wanted, or who they were, or what is comprehended, and after the meeting, I had some people come to me and say, but there are two distinct blocks here that want to be annexed, and then there were neighbors that didn't want it and whatever, and I, I think that this is, on its own, it should be considered, because it is a distinct geographic area. It's in the midst, midst of Coral Gables, the other one is too, but this is a distinct geographic area, Mendoza to the south, Eighth Street to the north, and Coral Gables on both sides, and it very much affects our traffic, it affects our crime, it affects our, our, hourly motels, there's a trailer park, there are abuses there, and our neighbors, those surrounding this area, want for the annexation to take place, and we heard it today. The impact that we have today with the police, yes, you know, they would, we would need three more police officers, but we do have a full complement of police with four, I think, or three vacancies today versus the sixteen we had, and we're progressing to filling it, and we today suffer the consequences of the crime of Little Gables, including Eighth Street, in Coral Gables, even if they're not part of those, and we would have more control of the area if they were part of us. We have a wonderful city, and it would have been part of Coral Gables if Merrick had bought that property when we bought, when he bought the rest of Coral Gables. I think that we, this commission has a responsibility to be forward-thinking also. I was very much criticized, we in the commission were very much criticized, and you weren't, none of you were here, because it was like fifty-two years ago, but you weren't here, but we were very criticized for being forward-thinking, because we had to stay the same as we were, and it was a garbage truck parking lot, it was a dump. We did Merrick Park, and today we have Merrick Park, and that's the pride of Coral Gables. It's, we are about quality of life, and this is squaring the city off. We incorporate- We incorporate Leopard Creek, Hammock Lakes, Pine Bay Estates, Deering Bay, Kings Bay, and they were very, very successful incorporations, and the comments that you hear today against this incorporation, we heard the last time when we incorporated these, the zoning, the taxes, it's going to stretch our police and fire rescue, and they have been very, very successful. Insofar as financing, if you look at page 18, out of our three, out of our $190 million budget, this will have a, the first year, a $633,000 impact, but very conservative, because it doesn't take into account the homes that are sold. This is the most conservative estimate, but then it goes down to $375,000 and to $241,000 after six years. That is peanuts. That is nothing in comparison to our budget, and we would do a service to our residents, we would do a service to their, this area by squaring off Coral Gables, which is what Merrick, Merrick wanted to do in the beginning, and as, you know, we were told, this is not the final vote, but it will allow the process to go forth, and we will have other bites at the apple in order to say, we don't want it. And I would very much urge for us to pass this today with the opportunity of looking at it again in the future.
All right, Mr. Mayor. We, you and I agree on a lot.
Yeah.
I don't know if we see eye to eye on this one. Let me explain to you why, and you talk about being forward-thinking. I think there are a lot of residents that think I'm probably a little too forward-thinking on certain things, but you talk about how it's going to square off the city, it's going to help. I haven't seen, and that's why I wanted to hear from Frank Fernandez also, because Brett Gillis, I think his name was, I apologize if I slotted your last name, if you're still here, Brett, and Mrs. Gonzalez, they brought up a point that made me think, because you talk about it's going to help policing, it's going to help square off, it's going to help with traffic. I haven't seen that presented to us that that's going to be the case, and maybe I'm wrong, maybe I'm missing something. So, I'm not, I'm not trying to be a contrarian, I'm just trying to see what the overall benefit really could be for the city. Now, I agree the other annexations have been very successful. In 2002, I mean, I wasn't, I was not an elected official, but I was in favor of the Kings Bay annexation, because I was somewhat involved and I was paying attention to that. Again, I'm not, my mind is not fully made up on this. It is really not. I'm trying to keep an open mind on this, but I haven't seen the, what's been presented to us, it hasn't been convincing enough to me to make that necessary step, to take that, that plunge into, you know, costing us...
$200,000.
$2.7 million over the next, over the next...
Yeah, 10 years.
Before, yeah, it's still a lot of money. It's not, you know, so I just, I want to hear more evidence why it's going to help us policing, why it's going to help on traffic. I just haven't seen that. I'm open to it. If I see it, I would, I would love, I would love to be presented with that.
But I think that Frank Fernandez can explain, I mean, I think he, in talking with him and all the meetings leading up to it, the information that I was provided with made me very comfortable, so maybe it's a matter of whatever information we have. When he's done, I'd like to talk to you a little bit about, from the county perspective, because I worked as Jimmy Morales' policy aide during the period when these other places were being annexed, and I worked in the county, and so I understand the county's process too, and I'd like to talk to that when we're done with...
And I want to be clear about it, please educate me.
Yeah.
And convince me, and I'm not, I don't want you to think I've made up my mind.
Please, order, order.
Let me be clear. Sir, sir, with all due respect, with all due respect, with all due respect...
Now, listen, we have to keep control of this, or people will have to be asked to leave.
With all due respect, sir.
We'll have to ask you to leave, sir, so please.
No, no, it's okay.
Please.
It's okay. With all due respect, we know a lot by now. We know of all kinds of information, but that doesn't mean that we're persuaded to move forward with annexation. There's a difference. It's not that you don't have information, we have lots of information, but again, I'm not convinced that we have to move forward today for this to happen. I want to move forward when we have all our ducks in a row, and I feel completely comfortable with the decision that is going to cost us money and that is going to impact the lives of a lot of people. And so, this, this meeting is happening today because we noticed it for today. We could have noticed it for three weeks from now, and we would have been making the decision then, so there's not some, as far as I'm aware, and our consultants can correct me, there's not some hard deadline for this to occur tonight that's going to impact or prejudice this process in any meaningful way. So, again, I'm not going to apologize for wanting to make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row before we proceed. Frankly, we have a commission meeting in two weeks, we could potentially vote on it then. I'm not, I'm not sure, but I'm in the same place that Commissioner Casala is in. Certain statements, for example, that, you know, squaring it off is 100% good for public safety, okay, I understand the concept, but I haven't seen a lot of data on it. I have seen data about how much money this is going to cost us, and I frankly do think it's important to consider both areas. I understand they're separate votes, but one area is going to generate a significant amount of revenue. Revenue, for example, that would pay for the shortfall on Little Gables. So, I think it's important to know what's going to happen on both, frankly, and I don't see what the benefit is.
That will kill this...
Why, but you said that, that's a very blanket statement. Why will it kill it? Why will it kill it?
We have rules of decorum, we can't argue with each other.
But why would it kill it?
We can't argue with each other.
No, not argue, I'm asking a question.
Commissioner Mano?
Both of you.
If we can let Frank, and then I'll talk to you about what my experience was from working in the county and working with the county, and a lot of it is just an issue of process, but we could, if we'd like to hear from the Public Safety Director, and then we could discuss that. I'll tell you what my experience was.
But I'd like to also hear from the consultants about whether or not, and that's fine, whether or not...
Craig Coller and I worked together at the same time in the county.
That's fine.
On this, so I remember him from there. So, we could, we could talk about it, and he, I could tell you as a, from a legislative viewpoint what it is, he could tell you some of the weather, but some of it is in dealing with the county, and we could talk about that, okay?
Sure, absolutely.
But I think Frank could tell you.
That's what we're here for.
Do you want to hear about the...
Both.
Well, you want to hear first about the policing?
Doesn't matter.
Okay.
Well, let's hear about the policing, please.
Director, the policing. So, I just want to ask it as an open-ended question, the impact of squaring it off, the city of Coral Gables at that location, in your experience and your studies, will it impact either positively or negatively or otherwise?
Well, I'll speak to you from a perspective of policing the opposite side for 25 years, the city of Miami, and now on this side in Coral Gables, we have a joint law enforcement agreement with the city of Miami, where we're both police, H Street along Lejeune Road all the way to 57th Avenue. It makes logical sense strategically that we would incorporate that, because we have congruency of the area. The patrols right now are going around it, they probably go through it to get from one side to the other, but being in there, we're able to gather more intelligence of what's happening in the neighborhood, what's affecting it, because the cities don't have borders for criminals. So, the criminals don't stop because of Little Gables or Coral Gables itself, so squaring it off does make logical sense, because we're on three sides, and the county has limited exposure by only one side. I submit to you that of the years and years that I've seen Little Gables evolve, it certainly has gotten better, but I believe that through our policing efforts and through our, the level of policing we're providing Coral Gables, that we can deliver a better police service, which would complement the adjacent neighborhoods in Coral Gables. As far as the data, I submit to you, we need to drill down into it to provide you that information you're looking for in terms of data, and we'll be happy to do that for you.
But so, we don't have that data.
I need to know what type of data you're looking for, and then I will provide it.
Crime statistics, other annexations, how they've, you know, that type of thing. Question for you, and I want to be, make sure I'm clear on what you just explained. One thing is the impact on public safety for Little Gables, for the area to be annexed. Another thing is the impact on public safety in North Gables, existing residents of Coral Gables, and I'd like to understand how it improves public safety for our existing residents in the North Gables, and I'll ask you that question in the context of, okay, so on, you know, you have the area to be in Little Gables to the east of North Gables, right?
Mm-hmm.
But you also have, for example, you know, west of 57th is not Coral Gables.
Certainly.
So, how is that any different, is what I'm trying to understand? At the end of the day, residents, we're going to have residents who are on the border of our city, whether that border is on our existing borders, or whether it's on the border of what is currently Little Gables. And so, I'd really like to, do you understand what I'm saying?
I do, absolutely.
What I'd like to understand is, again, the impact on our current residents, and whether or not there's a significant improvement in public safety for our current residents in North Gables, and if so, why? And if your answer is that there is, what kind of data we have to support that?
Well, I believe it has a positive impact. You know, our strategic plan evolves on omnipresence. That means that we're everywhere and anywhere in a given time. Our volume calls for service are much lower, so our presence in that neighborhood is much greater than probably most other police departments. Additionally, part of our strategy is to put a neighborhood safety in that neighborhood to add additional presence and additional layer into that community. The added benefits is that the added value for the Coral Gables residents is that we're able to police that area at a much greater level than it's being policed today, and therefore reducing crime as a whole.
Can I, Commissioner Lago wants to speak, can we listen to him, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we have Commissioner Lago on the phone. I'm going to put the microphone up to the phone, he wanted to say a few words. Commissioner Lago, you're ready.
Thank you, Craig. Can you hear me loud and clear?
Yes.
Okay, first off, I apologize for not being there in person, and I appreciate my colleagues' flexibility. This is the first time it's happened to me, so I just ran into a family issue I had to take care of, but I'll be brief. I'm 100% in favor of annexation, but I want to be very clear that I respect the comments of Commissioner Mano and Commissioner Casala, and what I think is in the best interest of the city, is that we finish up this conversation today. I have some, I have some questions that I have, especially for Director Fernandez, that I need to really address with him in reference to public safety. Commissioner Mano brought up a lot of them. I think that I want to make sure that we're not hindering our North Gables community in putting ourselves in a position where we can provide the necessary services, along with bringing in a portion of the city which may not receive the same level of policing, you know, so I want to be very, very clear on that. So, what I think, what I'd be in favor of is, is basically, at the next commission meeting, is at 5 o'clock, so that people can attend if they want to attend. It's not going to be a public hearing unless the mayor deems it so, but that the commission make that decision in the open at that point. I want to have a moment, maybe over the next two weeks, to think about this, ask a few other questions of Director Fernandez, city manager, our city attorney, and make that decision in the public, obviously, but give my colleagues a necessary time to feel comfortable and that they don't feel rushed. This is a very important decision. I am in favor of annexation, but I want my colleagues to feel 100% comfortable in regards to the issue.
Thank you.
Well, we can continue the discussion.
Well, I think that the issue also, in squaring off the city, it, in speaking with Director Fernandez and with Chief Hurdak also, we talked about the, this issue of geofencing the city, and it gives you a much, you have a much greater ability to geofence at very strategic locations when it is squared off because of the border of Lejeune and Eighth Street. So, that was one of the issues that, for me, was very significant. I mean, we also know that for the people that live in the North Gables, that, and as he said, that's, you know, they don't know a boundary, but, but you can't, you don't know what's happening beyond our border of the city of Coral Gables, where, as they're part of the Gables, we will know. And then, in the natural boundary of Lejeune Road and Eighth Street makes a much bigger difference than Mendoza or one of the other, you know, smaller streets, so I'm, I'm comfortable with that. Did you have some more questions to answer?
Well, but I think we still have some questions here, so...
Was it the, the police ones?
No, I think that was pretty much clear on the, on the police issue, subject to, you know, to the extent we have data on what's occurred in other areas that have been annexed, you know, I'd like to see actual information other than, you know, general answers.
What I've gathered from his statements is that he feels that there will be a benefit to the existing areas of Coral Gables by squaring off. So, for policing, it's a plus in favor, is what I'm hearing.
Yes, we believe so. And we would also extend our geofence, as the commissioner mentioned, so we would acknowledge you into it. You know, right now, in the state of Florida, we have the highest number of reeds in our license plate readers, so we would extend that along H Street towards Coral, towards the Little Gables area, and we would close off that geofence. That has a great added value to our security, it's paid off very, very well so far. Our crime rate continues to drop, it is working out, as you know, in terms of the, in favor of that technology, we would look to extend that into Little Gables. It's logical that when you look at it, just squaring it off makes logical sense for policing. The number of units we would have in there crossing through or policing would be much greater, and the presence, that omnipresence would be increased, and we know without, with omnipresence, crime drops.
With the geofence, we, as far as, again, North Gables is concerned, we already have that, correct, along Eighth and 57th?
We have it at, we have three at Eight and 57th, and we have one at Ponce and H Street. We would look to put those in that area, we can't put them now because they're not part of our area, and close it off.
Right. So, the, thank you, Director Fernandez. My, my other question was, I guess, for our consultants, but...
If it would be...
Well, but we're here to talk, I mean, we can talk, we can answer these questions. Yeah, exactly.
I wanted to just tell you a little of my experience, having worked in the county and worked for Morales, who was the, had District 8, and District 8 was a little different then than it was now, but it was, we mostly had most of Coral Gables, and there was a discussion for a long time about that annexation of Ponce Davis and, and High Pines and Little Gables and whatever else. Now, the county at that time didn't want to move forward with the, with Ponce Davis and that area unless you took Little Gables, only because those are areas that are contiguous to the city of Coral Gables and very small, and the county was attempting to deliver municipal services to those areas. Because of them being contiguous, all of these neighborhoods, they wanted you to, okay, you can't pick and choose. If you're going to take them, we want you to take them all. So, I think that there has always been support for taking them all, and it's also up to the residents that live in those areas as to whether or not, what city they would like to join, because I know Pinecrest has courted them, I know South Miami has courted them, so, you know, they can choose to go wherever they want. They have voiced a desire to come to Coral Gables. We have a commitment from, or support from the county commissioners that represent those areas to move forward with annexation. So, having worked in the county, knowing the county, watching their processes, I'm, have a very high level of comfort that we will move through with those areas also. As soon as we finish this one, we will start the next. We know that this one, even if we start it now, it's going to be 2020 before they come in, so we have two years. That's why I'm not real concerned about even some of the personnel issues, because once we make that decision, we know that we can continue to recruit, and so when that day comes that we need to have the personnel there, we will, I'm comfortable that we will have them.
But again...
But I know that they will move forward, so I think it's really, the onus is on us as a city, that once we make the determination, if we decide that, yes, we will go forward with Little Gables, you know, if that decision, if we come to that decision, and I know you still want to discuss that, but if that's the decision, then it will be to begin the process to move on to those next areas. Those areas are ready to have that discussion and very much want to be annexed too, so it wouldn't be a very long period of time, I believe, before, you know, they would fall into these, into this also. So, do I think it's going to be 10 years out? No, I think it may be a year out.
But, but, okay, so...
So, I'm not that, I'm not concerned about that, and I think the reason for not doing it all at one time is that just happens to be the way the county processes things. I'm sorry, go ahead.
There seems to be a bit of a disconnect, though, and so that's why I want to clarify, I think, in what you were saying and what the mayor said a few minutes ago, and what I guess I want to understand then is why then would not proceeding with this at this exact moment kill it, and, and, you know, the mayor indicated that his experience at the other meetings with the Ponce Davis, High Pines area was that there was uncertainty, you're indicating that there's certainty...
I, I think that there was, there were some residents from High Pines that were there that expressed...
But we don't know yet.
No, I mean, they expressed some desire to not, we know that we've, right, we know that we, from the people in, in Ponce Davis, the vast majority of those people that have contacted us are very much in favor of it and want to move forward with it. So, and we won't know, exactly.
We will know.
We won't know where they want to go until, but I will tell you, and it's very likely that once, if we vote to annex Little Gables, and we know that Ponce Davis wants to come into the Gables, they have voiced that, I feel very comfortable with that, you're going to have this very small area in the middle, and the likelihood is that the county, or there is... there is a chance that the county will, will move that forward.
But what's, but what is the benefit of moving forward with one and not the other?
None, only then it's just the process, but it's a matter of collecting, it's, and there are different commissioners, for one thing, they're represented by, by different commission districts.
Right.
So, one is working with one, and then you'll move forward and, and, you know, move on to the next.
They have voted 67% for, the other ones haven't voted.
No, so I think it's a matter of just duplicating this process, once you've gone through one, you'll just, you'll move to the next one, and I, I think so, I think it's more that it's sequential, probably, than all at once.
But if you're saying there's no benefit to moving forward, let me, I just want to be clear, there's no necessarily a benefit to move forward with one and not the other, so I'd like to understand, then, what the detriment is.
I think it's just timing, I think it's because...
Right, but what would be the prejudice or the downside to them going simultaneously?
Because they're different areas, they're different areas.
But that doesn't make it a negative, no, it doesn't.
It does, it does. The people here have voted 68% to come to us, we are told by Frank Fernandez that it would behoove us to do that for our crime statistics because of the fencing the city. The other area hasn't even voted, they're not even put together, I think, they're different processes, and we're not going to make, you know, apples and oranges, mix them together, let's do one, and then simultaneous, or afterwards, we'll do the other.
Yeah, I don't, oh, go ahead, why don't you, why don't you speak to it?
I'm, I'm not sure from the perspective of the process.
From the perspective of the process, it's a nine-month process when it gets through the county. The first part of it, the, the heavy lifting is getting that 20% plus petitions, which is what we've done in this case. It requires, in order to do an annexation, you must get signatures from 20% of the elected, rep, elected...
The electorate.
Electorate.
The electorate.
Excuse me.
The voters.
So, the voters. So, that is what we've done in Little Gables now.
What's the timing on that in the other area?
The timing on that is, we've yet to do that, I, Naomi, I think, has some up-to-date information on that.
Good evening, everyone. So, petitions have gone out and continue to go out for the High Pines, Ponce Davis area, and we requested that petitions be returned by November 30th.
So, we'll know by, we'll know by the end of the month?
Well, once we have those petitions back, we have to make sure that we can identify concurrent areas, you know, because you may get some areas that are for, you may get some areas that are on the fence, so you need them to be adjacent to existing...
Naomi, when you say petitions, though, you mean a survey and a petition, didn't we include, but we are doing a survey?
It's a document that functions as both a survey and a petition.
That's the official petition by which we will determine whether to proceed, correct?
Correct.
If, if 20% of the residents, of the voters in that area want to move forward, then we can move forward.
Well, we, my understanding, but just to be clear, my understanding is that we've done two things. One, the survey, we've, we've said that needs to have 66% response, and obviously, we need 20% of the total electorate to submit a petition.
Right.
We need both.
Right, but that document we sent out can serve both purposes.
Yes, one is legally required.
We don't need to perform an additional mailing.
The 20% is legally required, the 66% is a sort of a policy determination by the city manager that the commission has supported.
Right, and so, with respect, I would say, we're anxious to receive the ballots back. We've mailed, and we're continuing to mail, to Ponce Davis and High Pines. We will bring back to the commission the information and ask the commission whether or not they want to proceed if we do not have that 66%, but legally, we must have 20% of the registered voters having signed a valid petition. So, the 66% was something that I created only because you gotta want to come into the Gables, and we wanted to make sure that there was a strong support. We saw it with Little Gables, 68% of the surveys, and Commissioner Sosa helped us with that, said, yes, they would like us to proceed in annexation. We're measuring that now in Little, in High Pines, Ponce Davis, while we are also doing the physical required survey and petition.
Mr. Coller, I'm not sure I got a clear answer, though, on my most fundamental question, which is, what would be the downside to them proceeding simultaneously? And, and is, is there some sort of, and maybe Craig knows the answer, this legal requirement that you proceed within a certain amount of time from the petitions, or anything of that nature that we should be aware of?
There, there is no legal requirement as far as the timing. The only timing issue comes when you want to time the annexation so that it's in time to get on the tax roll. So, for example, if you were, if you wanted it, for example, for 2019, you would want the annexation to occur, occur before January 1st, 2019. Otherwise, that, that valuation, the, the property taxes are going to miss that year. So, that's the only, that's, it's just a timing issue with respect to that.
And have you spoke, are, is it city staff, or you, or both, who have been speaking to the county about the potential of annexation for these two areas?
Well, I've, I have discussed this, we've been in contact with the budget department that handles the numbers for the annexation, and with respect to Little Gables, the budget department's been very involved in the initial survey by Commissioner Sosa. I believe that, and Commissioner Sosa, obviously, has been very, very involved in the issue of the annexation, and her position was, she wanted to do what the, what the representative, what the people in the area wanted, and that was, she basically kind of concurred with the city managers' thought of, well, let's, let's have a strong mandate before making a decision. So, even though that's not a legal requirement, in Little Gables, we made a 66% sort of requirement, and it was, I believe, 68%.
Do you believe that, and I'm not, I'm not even suggesting that we do this at this point, I'm just asking the question so we can understand our options, do you believe that if this, if we moved forward with the petition process on the other area and attempted to move forward simultaneously with the two areas, understanding that it's two distinct votes, you can vote yea on one and nay on the other, I understand that from a legal perspective, that that would somehow kill the deal with respect to Little Gables? With, with respect to the county?
I, I, I'm just talking legally, I don't know about emotionally or policy-wise, but from a legal, it doesn't impact it. I will say this, because I remember, because I was part of the county in the original annexation of Ponce Davis, was it 2002? Wow, okay. I was there a long time. So, I know that, that there was concern on the county's part, that the, that the city wasn't, and I was working for the county at that time, that the city wasn't going to take Little Gables, they just, they didn't want Little Gables at that time, and I know the county was concerned about other annexations if the city wasn't interested in taking in Little Gables. Now, that was 2002, and a lot of time has gone in between that, and not all the commissioners were there, but I, that was a thought at that time.
Right, I, I think that the, that, I know you were talking about doing simultaneously, where I really think that we can do it sequentially, and I think it is a very good faith effort on our part of the city to the county that says, yes, we will start here and we will move down. Because they're want to go, they, those other areas want to move too, and the county wants them to move, they want them to come into the city. So, I, and I think for the city, we can take care of the, the personnel needs and the other issues that we need, and have that taken care of and in place as Little Gables comes in, and then roll over to the next ones. We will have that experience, we will have that knowledge, and we will just, it will move, you know, sequentially.
And the issues are different. The issues are different.
So, I think that, that's where I would, you know, I would tend to do it, I would tend to go ahead, and then, as long as you, you know, if you don't want to do annexation at all, that's another issue.
No, 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 not at all.
But I think for the timing of annexation, I mean, the timing, I think to do it sequentially is good for, it's good in our relationship and our efforts with the county, that we, you know, we do show our good faith and that, yes, we're going to do this, we then expect you in turn to, you know, move this along too. We have the commissioners that represent those areas fully supportive of these efforts. We have, and I think for the city and for the city staff, as for planning purposes, for personnel and for equipment and for everything else, to move through it sequentially is, is just a much, it makes it maybe a little easier than everything all at once.
And there are other issues with High Pines and Ponce Davis, which will come up, including the need for a fourth fire station, and we've been talking about it and, and, you know, sunset somewhere, that, there are different issues between these two areas. This area has voted, 20, I mean, 68% voted for, we are here, there, 20% of the petitions are in, and it is, I think, unfair, and, and, you know, not legally, but I think it doesn't make sense for us as leaders of this community to put this off until another area with a heck of a lot of uncertainty is decided upon. I think that, with your permission, we've discussed this, and if the, the feeling is to put it off till the next commission meeting, I will entertain a motion to do that.
I have one, one more question for, for city staff, which is, do we have a commitment at this point in time with respect to exactly what's happening with the mobile home area? I understand there's been some conversations with the owner, but what is, what is the actual plan with that?
So, I personally met with Jay Suarez, who is the owner of the trailer park, to understand what their vision is, to make sure that it was complementary to what the city's overall vision was, not only for Little Gables, but for the North Gables. We are very interested in working with them, we have identified an architect planner that will do a, a study with him at city's expense, because it's our interest in getting some good things happening there, and we're finalizing that document with the, the outside consultant. But we talked specifically about the desire to retain the senior residents that are there, incorporate them in future housing, but not mobile housing, and to encourage redevelopment of that entire site in a way that would work well with the adjacent neighbors in Little Gables, but also be of benefit to him. I'm absolutely convinced that we'll be able to, and with the Dover Coal, who we're, we're contracting with, we will be able to develop for your consideration, for Jay Suarez's consideration, in consultation with the Little Gables neighborhood, a really viable plan that will lead to a better, stronger neighborhood in that area.
All right, do I hear a motion to postpone this till the next commission?
Mr. Mayor, actually, I would ask that you do a motion to continue it to November 14th at 5:00 p.m.
Well, if, if, if you're not comfortable to, to vote tonight, I'm fine to wait, and that's up to you.
I'd like, I'd like to get, I'd like to get data from Mr. Fernandez, to really understand the impact.
Okay, I'd like to continue the meeting until the, the, the commission meeting on... Oh, did you make the motion? I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you.
So, please note, just for everyone here, that there's not going to be any further notice, this has been continued, the public hearing has already occurred, the, it's continued to the November 14th meeting at 5:00 p.m., that's when the matter will be heard. It's at the city commission chambers at City Hall.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you.